-Z zero N or O N dash one three five. All who intend to testify or believe that they may testify should stand and be sworn in by the clerk.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
You see it.
Next, the petitioner has 15 minutes to present the case.
Thank you and good evening. I see Mr. Callaway is here. My name's Joe Calderon. I'm an attorney with offices at 11 South Meridian, Indianapolis. Our firm represents the Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township. And in particular with this batter that's before you this evening, which is a rezoning application that applies to a little bit over 40 acres. And I've given you everything that you probably need in booklet form and probably have an extra one for Mr. Callaway as well. But this site is located on the north side of 52nd Street at 10410 is the common address. So we are to the west of German Church Road. It's undeveloped ground that's zoned DA. Now DA is the default zoning classification that is kind of a carryover from the old agricultural district that goes back to the previous version of the zoning ordinance. So at some point, this property is going to be zoned for something. And we are proposing SU2, which is a special use district that is for schools or educational use. And what happens following SU2 is that there has to be a more specific development plan that ultimately is tendered to the city of Indianapolis, DMD. And that plan is judged against loosely the commercial zoning ordinance for standards such as setbacks and buffering and things of that nature. So most every property that you see that has a school or school type of facility on it would be zoned SU2. That is very typical. And most of these SU2 districts are necessarily kind of in residential areas because schools serve residents. The need here is to relocate the existing transportation facility. And we are proposing to use about 33 acres of the site for a new transportation facility, which will have office building and then an area for buses as well as maintenance. I'm going to go over to the big board for a moment. You can find kind of the context map in your packet in tab one. You can see the post site sits here. This is a wooded area that in this portion here is seven acres that will not be developed, but will be owned by the school district. This is the acreage we're talking about for development. This is Point Dexter Industrial Park, which has several lots. This half of it is zoned industrial three. This portion of it is zoned industrial one. So we recognize that while we do have influences and we have to pay attention to our neighbors that have residential zoning to the west, east, and south, we also have neighbors and adjoiningers that are industrially zoned. And in fact, there are two lots left in the Point Dexter Industrial Park subdivision that ultimately are proposed to be developed as industrial. They're currently undeveloped at this point in time. One of the mis知overs and concerns that we've heard about is that we're going to be throwing a lot of traffic onto 52nd Street. The reality is the attractiveness to this site allows for ingress and egress both to the north to 56th Street and to the south. So we will be taking a route that goes up Point Dexter and then to Macy Drive to 56th Street as well as 52nd Street. More traffic, we think, will go to the north than to the south. So we actually have two points of ingress and egress. We have further refined our development plan. If you turned to tab two, you can kind of see it a little closer up. And we've tried to be sensitive, as I mentioned, to our neighbors. And based on conversations that we've had with the developer to the subdivision across 52nd to the south, which is Mann Properties, we met with Tim Stevens, a representative, a couple of weeks ago. And he talked about how we could be good neighbors. And of course, the school district wants to be good neighbors. They're in the people business. They're in, they serve residential owners every day. So part of that discussion involved, how do we make this more attractive from the streetscape? So what we've done is proposed a five-foot berm that really wraps around the southwest and east ends. You can see the effect of the berm in tab three and what it might look like. So when you have a five-foot berm to do the appropriate sloping, we're essentially going to have 50 feet of landscaped area with landscaping on top of that to provide a pretty good visual screen from the street. And that we put into a commitment, which you can find in tab five. And based on our conversations with Mr. Stevens today, Mann Properties finds that to be an acceptable way to mitigate. And that's what we've reported to other folks with whom we've spoken. So we're, the facility will also be secured. There will be a fence on the inside of the landscaping. So you're not going to see kind of the prison effect. You'll see the landscaping fence on the inside for security purposes. One of the things that we thought, and you probably saw in Mr. Callaway's report, was the notion of doing a plan of operation. And we do these from time to time when we're introducing a use where there might be questions or concerns that what you as a deliberating body might be approving could be a runaway train, if you will. This use is not 24/7, 365 days a year. This use operates during the school year for the most part. It does have some activity outside of that. But what we're doing is kind of explaining how we typically operate with respect to traffic. We're typically a little bit outside of peak. In other words, we're out on the streets before most workers are commuting to work. And then we come back mid-morning and then we go back out early afternoon and are back late afternoon. So to the extent that either you as council members or neighbors have a concern about conflicts with commuting traffic, we think we're outside of those hours for the most part. We believe that, as mentioned in our routing, having two points of ingress and egress is important to not load up 52nd Street as staff had expressed their concerns. And then the final thing we wanted to point out to you was our statement of commitments. And these are written promises that run with the land. So when we say that we're going to do our five-foot berm, it's in writing. This will be part of the zoning approval at this level. The city of Lawrence is a benefited party to this. And we put in the plan of operations. So in other words, we can't turn around and flip the switch without coming back and proposing an amendment to the commitments. There's one final commitment that we didn't have time to incorporate in writing tonight, but we had conversations with the Indian Lake Owners Association. And Mr. Mark Rumreich is here this evening. And he had expressed some concerns about making sure that we protected the watershed. So we have Billings Creek that comes into the property and the water actually travels up or to the north all the way to Indian Lake. And there were some email conversations between Mr. Rumreich and ourselves this afternoon about putting in a commitment that relates to making sure that our activities do not increase any hazard to the watershed. And by that, when you have buses or other vehicles, there is concern about fuel and we would have onsite fueling. So what we are proposing is that we would put in writing into our commitments that the operator of the facility will comply with all spill prevention control and countermeasure plans that are set forth in federal regulation 40 CFR dash 112.1 through 112.8 to the extent applicable to the operation and storage of oil or fuel on the subject property. It's a convoluted regulation that requires a little different treatment than what underground storage tanks do. And it just requires kind of a plan to be filed with EPA to the extent you have oil, which includes fuel, above a certain threshold. So we are reading that into the record for the benefit of Mr. Rumreich's organization and to the community to assure you that our intentions are to protect the environment and comply with everything that would otherwise be expected. With that, I don't know if you want to add anything else, Roger. Roger Smith is with us from the district. Mr. Craig Flannamire from Schmidt Associates, who's been working on designing these plans, is also here if you have any questions. Certainly thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from councilors?
I got a couple. I know at one time you guys tried to obtain the property of Young Mobile Homes in Indiana Mulch. So is this going to take the place of that?
Yes, there was no deal that could be reached with Indiana Mulch. So that was about a year ago.
Roger, you might want to... That was about a four-year process. We were trying to, we're landlocked at the current location, designed for 67 buses. We have 220 there. We have not been able to obtain any other land around that particular location to expand.
My other question is too, I see the hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 4:30 PM. What about football games and after-school activities?
We usually do have some buses running out of there. A lot of them will, at the 4:30 mark after their regular route, they'll go straight to that school and out to that event from that school location.
Okay. Then my last question is, if this gets passed tonight, what are you guys going to do with the property where the buses are now on Thunderbird?
We hope, we sell it for a lot of money. No, we are looking at that right now. But we would definitely like to put it back up on the market. We don't need two sites.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Madam President, I have a couple questions. Have we looked at how the excess traffic will affect 52nd Street and will that affect DPW or we have to fix that in the future?
As far as improving it, I might let Roger speak to that. We don't think there would be any need to upgrade the street beyond what its two-lane capacity is today. I don't know that the thoroughfare plan has any requirements for upgrading.
With added 200 and some odd buses possibly going on 52nd Street a day?
We tried to make it clear that we will be sending a lot of traffic up to 56th Street. It's not all 52nd Street traffic. So I'll let Roger speak to that a little bit.
Actually, the numbers, we have 144 routes a day. So that's how many buses will actually be moving, between 144 and 150 per day, twice a day. We do have 220 buses. We have spares and other different types of buses. So our fleet is larger than our actual routes. Seventy-five-plus percent, we are looking to go out the north end because they'll be traveling to the north end of our district. So the majority of our buses, that's 108 to 110, we want to move out the front to 56 because we also have stoplights left and right. And that will help us move our buses safely and also integrate into other traffic. We also have current routes in the area that we will try to send those buses south and west into those local communities. So the impact to 52nd Street will be minimal from the bus standpoint.
All right. And I had another question on the two houses to the east of the site. When you said that you've talked to the neighbors, I'm assuming those live also?
We did speak to the adjoininger to the east, yes. She had, we did it electronically. She was sent a notice that went to the assessor's address. I emailed her an additional copy of the notice. She had corresponded with Mr. Callaway. Her issue was conflict in terms of getting out of her driveway in the morning commute time. So we tried to explain to the best of our ability those hours and kind of our plan. And I haven't heard from her since. That was a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
The plan also shows, excuse me, the brim. We want to be good neighbors both to the west, south, and east. So we are carrying that brim all the way around, which also protects their house as well.
And we've done some site adjustments based on comments that we heard about not being too close to adjoiningers with certain facilities, who try to be sensitive to those things as well. So there hasn't been a ton of response or correspondence, but we've been very quick to respond to any comments or questions that we've had. And like I said, we met with Mann Properties, which is getting ready to develop a subdivision across the street and reached agreement with them. And Mr. Rumreich and I corresponded and I write into the record something that I think satisfies his group as well. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Yeah, I have a question if I may.
I think we got Counselor Chevot here and then we'll go over to Counselor Wells.
A brief question. I was reading in the DMD report, and usually they don't put this in there, and I'm not surprised, but currently those acreages on the tax rolls at 2%. Have you done a study about how much the city of Lawrence will lose if this proposal goes through? Because once it goes over to the school system, it becomes non-taxable.
Exactly. What we're hoping to do, it'll be a wash because if we do sell the current land in the current site, we're hoping that that could possibly go back on the tax rolls as well.
Our site is how many acres?
14 plus, but it's fully developed.
So just so you know, Counselor, the north seven acres that the school will be acquiring, that's not part of this project, is classified forest land, so it's exempt from taxes anyway. So we've got 33 acres that I think is unimproved and...
Agriculture.
Agriculture. So I don't know how much, off the top of my head, AV it generates, but hopefully Mr. Smith's response was satisfactory.
So you've probably had some conversations with the owner of this property and got an idea about what they're asking. You probably have done a feasibility study about your current site, about what the market rate is. Can you give...
We're in the process. No, I have not done the appraisal of our property yet.
So we don't know that will offset?
Well, no, not to be exactly, no. But we would like to definitely work with the city to hopefully put it back on the tax roll.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes, Counselor Wells.
Yeah, this is my district, so I'm fairly familiar with the area. The neighborhood to the west, there is only, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is only one access to that neighborhood, which is 52nd Street. And then the entrance to this proposed site is basically an industrial park to the, I think, didn't that...
Escavating, huh?
Yeah, the excavating company.
And that's the owner of the property.
So my concern to this whole thing is 52nd Street is a very narrow street. 56th Street's a very narrow street. We have another subdivision that's here again in my district that's right directly to the north that has a bunch of homes. It actually has two entrances to it, but of course, they're both of them just on 56th Street. And I just happened to be, well, the day we had the snow of this last week, the, I thought there was an accident. I came up on Pendleton Pike and I sat there while the police had the Pendleton Pike basically shut down to allow all the buses were coming in at the same time. This was right around 3:30 in the afternoon. You know, to me, it was a fairly busy time of the day, you know, and Pendleton Pike had already been shut down when I approached this. And like I said, I sat there, and maybe I'm exaggerating, but I feel I was at least there a good eight to 10 minutes. And like I said, there was already, you know, it already had been shut down. I'm not really sure how many buses would have came in off of Thunderbird Road, but there was a bunch of them came in off of Pendleton Pike, I'm sorry, off of 59th Street to Thunderbird Road. There was a bunch of them that came off of Pendleton Pike, you know, to Thunderbird Road. And my concern is, is the people that are coming home or just even trying just to get in and out of their neighborhood, you know, what's that going to do to them? Because once these buses, what I found, and I understand the police doing it this way, I'm sure it's a good idea, but when the buses are all coming, you know, there is no more traffic, I mean, no more movement of traffic. The buses are given total right-of-way. So I mean, basically, the people are going to stop and they're going to wait until all these buses get in or out of wherever they're going. So it just concerns me that 52nd and 56th Street are such small streets. The congestion is, because I've seen what congestion it causes on Pendleton Pike and that's, you know, that's a multiple-lane road. And what it could do to, you know, to these two small streets, it's my, that's my concern. And what it could do to, you know, to these two small streets, it's my, that's my concern. But, and I don't know if there's any other way of circumventing that issue or not, but I could certainly see, you know, the residents in this neighborhood to the west and even the ones to the north on Fifty-Sixth Street, you know, at certain times, like you said, there's, the buses are going out in the morning, they're coming back mid-morning, and then they're going back out again, I guess, sometime in the afternoon to, you know, to go get the kids from school, and they're going to come back in at the end of the day, which apparently that must have been like three o'clock, because they were all coming back towards Thunderbird Road, they weren't leaving. And this was like around three-thirty.
Any response to that?
During that time, yes, I monitored the traffic. I was fully aware of what was going on. At three o'clock, we are on routes. We dismiss at elementary's at two-forty-seven to two-fifty. So we did have buses in that area, not a lot of them, but they do, police do work with us and move traffic along. We rerouted our buses from that site, and we actually used Fifty-Sixth Street to do that, to move them south as well as coming back around Thunderbird. That's where our current location is, comes out on Fifty-Ninth Street, and we can send them back that way. So Fifty-Ninth Street is similar to Fifty-Sixth Street. We do quite well and have been since ninety-six. So we are very cautious and concerned about how we travel in our neighboring school district as well as location of our current location. Actually, Indian Creek's right off Fifty-Second there, so we run that quite often. And actually, I think it'll help that school with the current location where we're at with that. So yes, a lot of concerns out there, a lot of bus movement. Also, with the bus movement, the timing of that is no more than fifteen minutes any interval that we dismiss. For example, when they leave the lot in fifteen minutes, they're gone. They're dispersed. Likewise, as they come in. So from a standpoint of an operational standpoint, we're leaving between six and six-thirty AM. Most of our buses are on their routes. And then they come back in about nine AM. And then we have some buses that run during the day. And then at two PM is when they disperse for the evening routes. And then they'll start coming in between four-thirty and actually, well, through the evening as we have some athletic events and so on. So four-thirty is the main entry within the site.
Ms. Counselor Wells?
I have a couple of questions for you. As I was sitting here listening to this, I was thinking about where have I seen buses at in other school districts throughout the county? And so the first question I have is, many school districts will put their bus on their school lot that's attached to the campus. And I know we have some buildings that are not utilized for students. So I'm curious, have you ever, in your feasibility and your study, did you look at some properties, and which one were they, and why you didn't choose them?
Yeah, good comment. So yes, we've done a lot of study, looking at our current site. Number one is, I have one entrance and one exit. And number one, that's a huge safety issue for a day-to-day operation of that many buses. So accessibility is important, number one. Most of our school facilities are landlocked. Forty-four acres, you see forty, actually thirty-three of those acres we're going to be consuming. One thing, we are expanding the size of that a little bit for safety on-site, getting our buses in and out. And really, we don't have any other size large enough to accommodate both operations as a school and also as a bus.
Like Craig wouldn't work?
No.
Next question I have for you, comment. Pike Township's transportation facility sits, I believe, on Fifty-Sixth or Fifty-Second, and what's that, the cross street?
It's close to Guyan.
Yeah.
It's off the railroad track.
Right.
Saddle Brook neighborhood.
Right, so as I've thought about this, that neighborhood has, that bus station has residential. It's got commercial right next to it. It's got warehouses up and down Guyan with big semi trucks. And I'm over there frequently. Pike Township and Lawrence Township bury each other. No complaints. I'm curious to see if you could bring me back anything that might up your story or, because I'm going to go make some calls over there. So I want to see what you come back, because it looks like this facility we're building is pretty comparable. Right, so maybe we can see some apples-to-apple comparison that might make us feel a little better about this project.
Specifically, what would you like to?
Well, everything's about traffic flow. That street's not that wide. People are pulling out, people are coming out of the strip mall. There's a gas station there, huge warehouse, semis, people coming through, connecting to, you keep rolling through there, you connect to the highway. So I mean, that area is way more busy than what we're proposing. And so I'm curious that if the traffic works there, then there's no reason that it shouldn't work where we're at, because all the elements are there.
Actually, we were on-site two weeks, a week and a half ago. We as school districts are very close. We went over there to revisit their facility as we are trying to maximize our facility. And it was interesting, we looked at their site, how the flow on the site, because they're one-way.
They're one-way, yeah.
And for them to go back into their site, they have to come out of their site and back around the block and come back in. So there's more added traffic on their side than what ours would be. But yeah, it was between eight and twelve minutes their buses were offside. And that was in the PM when they left their lot to go pick and disperse. It was between eight and ten minutes, or eight and twelve minutes that all those buses...
That's a way busier, there's a lot more business and stuff going on there. So as far as the holdup to stop business, I would think that there would be more complaints there because there's people actually business. So, you know, I'm just curious that if that complaint, and if those neighbors are happy, then we should be okay. So I'm curious if you could support that argument or dispel it with any information in the future.
I appreciate it. We're going to have to move on, just in the best interest of time.
Of course, of course.
So I am going to move on to, do we have any remonstrators? You have fifteen minutes to present your opposition or objections. Okay, seeing none. Next, we have staff comments on behalf of Department of Metropolitan Development.
Oh, Madam President, I think lady here, pardon me, maybe she wanted to speak?
We are very concerned about...
Oh, ma'am, ma'am, you need to be sworn in. And if, did you sign in the back by any chance? Okay, so if you just step forward to be signed in and state your name, that'll be good.
Yeah, have her sign in.
Let me just have her come forward and get that. Ma'am, if you step forward, please, and state your name, address for the record, and then we're going to get you sworn in as well.
Okay, my name is Denny DeCrickmore. I live right next to this project at one-oh-six-forty East Fifty-Second Street. Our main concern is...
One moment, let me have you sworn in really quick.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Okay, so our concern is traffic. Like I explained to them, we was not really given hours. He just said that he was checking into the school as far as when the buses would be coming and going. My husband leaves for work at either three AM or five AM, depending on what, you know, if he's working overtime. I leave for work around seven-thirty. Our concern is, are we going to be able to get out of our, off of our street to get to work? The other concern we have is exhaust fumes. That was not discussed at all. I mean, you've got three-hundred-and-sixty spots of parking for buses. That's a lot of fumes coming out of that area, and we are right next door. Other than that, I mean, we liked the landscaping detail that was presented to us. That looked very nice. So I'm not trying to be super negative. We're just, we just have a few concerns, and mainly it's traffic. Actually, Indian Creek is not on Fifty-Second Street, it's on Fifty-Sixth Street. So that school is not on our street, which was stated earlier. And we do have two lanes, and it is very narrow. We get a lot of traffic coming from the golfing community that's across German Church. They come down our street as well as the neighborhood on the west side. So we do have a lot of traffic there already. So that's really all I had to say about it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Curtis didn't get sworn in, did he?
Sir, I'm going to just have you state your name and address for the record, and then we're going to swear you in, and then you can make your...
My name is Curtis Crickmore. I live at one-oh-six-forty East Fifty-Second Street.
All righty.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. I have a concern also with the traffic and the times that the buses will be coming and going. The traffic will be stopped both eastbound and westbound on Fifty-Second Street. So there's housing additions on both ends of where this project is going to take place. So everybody that's commuting up and down Fifty-Second Street every day, they're going to get stopped in traffic for ten or fifteen minutes while these buses come and go. It's, and if you add that up in a year's time or six months' time, I'm spending, sitting in my car, idling, probably, I didn't do the math, but probably a week or two every year because the buses are coming and going at the time I'm commuting. That is a concern, and I'm only one person. There are several residents in that neighborhood that's going to be dealing with the same thing. Concern also is the fumes that will be traveling from that facility over my property, which I live to the east of where that project is. I think there could be worse things that go in there. But trying to figure out the small roads, Fifty-Second and Second Street and Fifty-Sixth Street are two-lane roads, and buses are big. When you're talking two or three hundred buses, which I think on the, they're, they have allowed room for expansion in their buses, how many they have in the facility. If you, you know, have that many buses commuting in and out of there on two-lane roads, it's, I think, going to create a problem in not only deterioration of the roads, but also the people commuting back and forth. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time, sir. Any other remonstrators? Go ahead and come forward, sir, if you can.
My apologies for my...
Take your time, take your time. You're okay.
My name is Seth Brayman. I live at five-two-two-seven Traditions Road, and no, I did not sign in, so I'm...
That's okay. Can you spell your last name for us, please, sir?
Brayman, B-R-A-I-M-A-N.
Okay, thank you.
B-R-A-I-M-A-N?
Yes, ma'am.
And your address again is?
Five-two-two-seven Traditions Road. We're actually due west, and our backyard faces against this project.
Okay, so we're going to get you sworn in real quick, and then we'll take your comments, sir.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. There are two concerns. One is the increased damage that may occur and probably will occur to Fifty-Second Street. In the past, Fifty-Second Street has not been a primary street to be repaired. So we go through certain periods, like many streets here in the city, with winter damage. And now we're talking about increasing heavy vehicle traffic on that road, which may cause substantially more damage to the road just because of the weight and the usage of that road, and that we're speaking specifically of Fifty-Second Street. Is there anything within the plans to improve that road or to improve its ability to support the kind of weight that we're talking about in that particular area? I haven't seen anything yet, so I have to at least ask that question. The second question is, because my property backs up to this project, we're assuming there's going to be a certain amount of security lighting that will go onto the lot so that, as to protect those vehicles, which there should be something to protect those vehicles. But then the question is, at five o'clock in the morning, are we going to be woken up by large glaring lights into the back windows? And I'm not sure the egress, the trees and whatnot that are going in on that side of the property are going to be sufficient to negate some of that, or have they come up with certain plans not to glare security lights into our back windows? Therefore, changing the entire sleep pattern of that particular bank of people who have ownership of homes in that area. And I haven't heard anything concerning that as well, and I didn't know if anybody could provide that kind of information for us.
All righty. Thank you so much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Dex, we have staff comments on behalf of Department of Metropolitan Development.
Thank you. I believe I need to be sworn in as well.
Yes. And please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Larry Callaway, Department of Metropolitan Development, two-hundred East Washington Street, Indianapolis.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you. Our staff, in current planning of the Department of Metropolitan Development, looking at this request and looking at the newly adopted comprehensive plan, which was formally in effect as of January first, two thousand and nineteen, recommends suburban neighborhood for this area. Suburban neighborhood is a typology where one would expect to have single-family dwellings, some two-family dwellings, and multifamily dwellings, and some neighborhoods, commercial uses, not regional commercial uses, but just neighborhood, small businesses, banks, things like that. But it specifically does not recommend any type of schools along arterial streets, non-arterial streets. Fifty-Second Street is a collector's street. Arterial streets are divided into primary and secondary arterials. Pendleton Pike would be an arterial street. And then considering that it doesn't recommend schools on these non-arterial streets, seeing that this particular request would include a school transportation facility, the most intense type of... transportation facility, the most intense type of development a school could most likely have, we felt that could not support this request. In addition, considering the fact that this type of facility, if it was not in a, not a school facility, but a, a similar type of facility unrelated to a school, would only be permitted in the C7, I2, I3, and I4 districts, which are heavy commercial and medium and heavy industrial districts. So for those main reasons, we, we weren't supportive of the request. Additionally, there's some concern about the impact on the adjacent residential districts. They are providing quite a bit of separation from the residential development to the west. But we did feel there were some, the proximity of some of the development to the, to properties to the east was a little concerning. They mentioned, and I did mention in the staff report also that, you know, there, there was a indication of a proposed road going north from this property, apparently to connect to the Point Dexter site to the north. Having had some conversations with the attorney for Point Dexter over the last year, year and a half, I, I know they do have some, or have had some ideas about expanding to the south on that, on that property. However, at this point in time, that property is ZONDA. The ordinance right now would not allow a driveway of any sort that serves commercial, industrial, or particularly non-residential uses within a DA district. So any type of drive like that would require a variance to allow, allow that drive, or, or for them to rezonate to a classification that would allow that, that type of drive. So I, I'm not sure how timing-wise, you know, when that drive would be available for the school to use. Again, that's an unknown at this point in time. So we, we sort of considered it mainly that they're going to have access from 52nd Street in the short term at least, until if and when all the proper approvals were provided for on that property to the north. So anyway, for, for those reasons, we recommend denial of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Madam President?
Larry, you mentioned, it's in bullet point number two, I'm sorry, bullet point number three on the first page, apology does not recommend small-scale, large-scale schools along non-arterial streets. I was just curious, would you define this as a school?
Right. Well, it's a school-related facility. So it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow schools, and, and so any school-related facility, it wouldn't, also would not support. And like I said, if this was a, a non-school-related facility, they would be rezoning to the C7, I2, I3, or I4 district, and that would be a non-starter. We would never consider rezoning the site for that type of, for that type of
Sure. I, I just read in it literally, it says small-scale or large-scale schools. And, and I would look at a school.
Well, when it says that, it means schools, any primary or accessory use related to a school. So, you know, whether that be, you know, sports fields or whatever, if it's related to the school, that, that's what it's referring to in, in the, in the, in the plan itself. I'm just summarizing the plan. And when they refer to schools, or say, educational uses, they're referring to all aspects of that.
Mr. Callaway.
Madam President? Yes, Counselors?
The, just for clarification, and maybe I just missed, you know, what you just, you may have already answered this, maybe I just didn't get it. But the drive to the north that's on the excavating Point Dexter, is that their property, or is that a city, is that a city drive? Because I know it goes in two different directions, it looks. Is that, I've never been down that.
Yeah. Well, the, the drive that's shown in their plan doesn't exist yet. The Point Dexter property is, is, if you look at the, the map.
Right. The one that, in the gray is proposed, but the one that's above that
Right.
is existing.
Right.
And that's my question, I guess, is, is the one that's existing, is that a city property, or is that a, is that owned by Point Dexter?
I, I believe they've dedicated them to the public, that they're public streets.
It is a public street.
Yeah. From my, from my memory, that when they did the subdivision plat, they platted it with public streets.
But you said there was, they would have to got a variance for this street, this extension of this?
Well, it, it's not clear to me whether that's a, proposed to be a public street or a drive. Typically, you wouldn't have a, a public street of that length dead end, you know. So
Yeah.
there, there'd have to be either a cul-de-sac or, or some type of, you know, or, or another loop around to connect. You wouldn't just continue with a dead-end street for that, for that, for that length. So I presumed maybe they intended to have a drive come off of that, a private drive. Again, I don't know. It's unknown, because it's just a concept plan. So that's why I'm saying, it's, it's kind of an unknown as to how that's going to come about.
Do you have, and I know there're not, there's nobody here, do you have any indication how the city was leaning on this? Or is that putting you on the spot?
No, yeah, I have no idea.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President?
Counselors?
I just got one. Mr. Callaway, it seems like the citizens, the neighbors have a lot of concerns. In your professional opinion, you think if they went back to the drawing board and added additional commitments, would you feel more in a position where you may sign off on this? Or would this be something you'd be totally against no matter what?
I'd probably say that our staff would not likely change their opinion of the request. I mean, the one thing, I could see that if, but again, if they were proposing something that, you know, in, like they mentioned, connecting to the industrial park, if, if somehow that was, this became an extension of, of that industrial park, and then maybe that would be too much access on the 56th Street for, for that, if that was all interconnected and, and there wasn't access on 52nd. Or there was just the employee access on 52nd. If there was some other proposal like that, where the industrial traffic went to 56th Street, which is an arterial, and the employee traffic, the, the, their, in their passenger cars were accessing from 52nd Street, maybe that'd be a proposal that staff might consider a little more favorably. But again, we don't have that in front of us, so we haven't discussed that. But that's, that's one thing that came to mind when I first looked at this request.
Thank you, sir, for your time.
Okay, we're going to move on to petitioner. You have five minutes or less for rebuttal.
Thank you. Just to address some of the concerns, with respect to Mr. Brayman's concerns about security lighting, any light, there's actually a new lighting ordinance within the zoning ordinance. Any fixture that we have will be a cutoff fixture, meaning that the light would not be below the fixture itself. We do have, within our plan of operation, a, an idea of shifting traffic up to 56th Street through an extension of Point Dexter Drive, which is a public street. We do show that on our plan. If you feel that that's not vetted enough, we can certainly come back and have additional discussions with you. Our belief is simply this. While there is bus traffic, this is not an industrial use. This is not 24/7, 365, the way that industrial I2, I3 type of uses operate. This is a school use. Buses are used to, and indeed have to go on neighborhood streets, local streets, collector streets, all the time. It's just a simple fact of life. We may not like being behind a bus sometimes, but they serve the community, they serve our kids, and they do go on two-lane streets. We are not going to be stopping traffic. We obey traffic laws yield to rights of way. We're trying to find a site here with two points of ingress egress versus one to make the situation better. We've tried to cite this such that any of the nuisance characteristics, noise, et cetera, fumes, as the Crickmoors have cited, is far enough away from our neighbors, our residential neighbors, to mitigate or eliminate those types of concerns. So we think that if you consider Mr. Giles's comments about the Pike Township facility, which is similarly situated, Warren Township is on Rawls, which is a two-lane street near Post, this is not an unusual situation. And in fact, you do find SU2 zoning embedded within neighborhoods all the time. They're everywhere. They are everywhere. And finally, the only thing, and I know the comprehensive plan update is fresh, but if you consider this, if this neighborhood, if this 33 acres were to be developed with, say, 120 or 150 housing units, you still would have issues coming before you with respect to traffic concerns, et cetera. It's the same thing. You're going to go from nothing to something. So we think our plan of operation addresses a lot of the concerns. We understand and respect your comments as counselors. And if you feel that you need additional information, we'll come back. If you feel you have enough information to make a recommendation this evening, that's great. But we're in the people in the community business. We are not interested in fighting with staff, fighting with the City of Lawrence in any way, shape, or form. This is what they do. They are here to serve the community, just as you are. So we want to be good neighbors for the folks out here, as well as you as decision makers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, I know we're pressed for time, but one real quick question.
Sure.
Is it possible that instead of you, instead of the school moving its entire operation to this new site, that the school could just use this new site as a possible overflow for what it's not capable of handling where it currently is, and leave it where it currently, and operate out of both sites?
I'll let Roger answer that. I don't know.
No, in the, in the best interest of time, we, we have to move on. And right now, the zoning ordinance is as it stands. So we will be acting on what's been presented with us right now. So I'm going to just move us along in the best interest of time. Thank you, sir. Next, we have five minutes for the remonstrator. If you have any rebuttal. Okay. Seen none? We have our ballots in front of us. And we need a motion. Motion? Is there a motion for recommendation of approval or denial?
Do we need a motion on this?
No. It's just a vote. Counselors, go ahead and just proceed with voting per the ballot that is in front of you.
Seven votes were cast, four to deny, and three to grant. The petition is denied.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Okay, questions? Counselor Giles?
Thank you so much for the work that you guys have done over this time. The last four or five years, I've really been paying attention to your organization. You've just accomplished a lot, and I truly want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have, I have not been able, will we be able to see this award or the details of the award, and will we be able to see that? As you talk about the city and you working collaboratively, what my curious is, I wanna know that is there matching dollars involved? There's any type of responsibility on the city's behalf per this agreement?
No. So, the grant is 100% funded. It was $5,851,969. That funds the planning phase. It funds Phase One, which is renovations to the theater and some technical improvements to the Starett Center. Phase Two is in addition to the theater. Phase Three is the moving of a historic building known as the Communications Building owned by the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority. Where it is right now, kind of sequestered between lot and loopies driveways and the ravine, it's not very well-used and would probably be torn down. So, we are now going to move that over to Post Road, just behind the Starett Center, to renovate as a visual arts building. And Phase Four is the cultural plaza that ties all of that together, which is right now a parking lot. And Phase Five is the place-making and the arts components for all of those. And there are a lot of arts components.
Madam Chair, one follow-up question is, I hate to get into some tough stuff, but you mentioned that there's money and there's a grant to fund renovations inside of the theater.
Correct.
Two to three years ago, we found dollars in the general fund, if I'm not correct, if I'm correcting the front, but we found money in the general fund to move you forward in that. Would it be so gracious of the organization to refund the city the money that we spent in the general fund back to those renovations that were done, that we paid out?
So, those renovations, I will remind you, there was insurance money. That was not money that was supposed to be given to Arts for Lawrence. It was money that was supposed to be put into the theater before Arts for Lawrence moved in. And that didn't happen. And so, somewhere in the change of administration, the new administration sought out $50,000 to make those repairs to backstage.
Right, but it wasn't directly from the insurance check, which would have been the old administration's responsibility. I only say that because I do want you to know, as the financial chair, I will be doing everything I can to get the city's money back from the reinvestment. And I just don't want you to think that that is for any ills to slow the project down. But with this kind of money, I think we could get our $50,000. It's reasonable for the city to request $50,000 back to the general fund.
Well, actually, it's in our lease agreement with the city that those repairs would be made before we moved in. So, it wasn't ever anything that Arts for Lawrence ever intended to pay for themselves. The building was in disrepair, there were holes in the floor, there was no walls, all of the light fixtures had been ruined. I mean, it was due to a flood, and so, we were just getting the city to hold up its contractual obligation.
All right, well, I'll discuss it with the controller. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor?
I would like to say, Judy, I'm very proud of what you've done for the city and the theater. I went past there at nighttime, and the lights just looked like I was just in New York City. But I turned around, and I'm in Lawrence, and I wanted to thank you for that. But people in West Old Lawrence, they're kinda like, don't know what's going on. Why is all this renovation going on on the fort? How come they can't get anything down there? But this is a grant. This is something that you applied and you went after.
That's correct.
So, I just wanted that to...
That's correct. So, these are private dollars. There are no taxpayer monies being spent on this at all. It was a very competitive grant application to the Lilly Endowment. There were 256 initial applicants, 18 ended up with funding. And the Lilly Endowment was looking for something very innovative through arts and culture, and that is the only thing these dollars are able to be spent on.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Wells?
I got a few questions. First, could you re-explain what Phase Five is again, please? I didn't quite catch...
Okay, so, it's kind of a lingo term called place-making, so...
Place-making, okay.
Place-making.
Could you clarify that for me?
I can. So, there are lots of elements that will go into the plaza and in the lobbies of these campus buildings that bring people to that place. And that's where you come up with the term place-making. So, there are, does, all the park benches will be designed by artists, the trash receptacles. There will be an interactive, all-age playground on the cultural campus. There will be an amphitheater. There will be an augmented reality application so that when you look through your cellphone camera, you'll be able to see the history of the fort and the buildings on the campus and beyond. All of those elements, we call the place-making phase.
Well, another question I had as well, which some of the constituents have asked me, because in the original plan, you know, that you, or the original presentation that you brought forth, and you had said too, that there's going to be money in your endowment, I guess, to do work on the Starett Building. Does that give your organization control of the Starett Building, or does it still remain in the hands of the Parks Department? Can it still be leased? Can it still be rented by citizens or...?
So, this application is really just a capital improvement project. We are gonna put about $100,000 worth of technical support in the Starett Center. We hope to partner with the Starett Center to bring more publicly focused programs there. But the Parks Department has always and will remain the caretakers of the Starett Center, not Arts for Lawrence.
So, will it still be available to, for, you know, weddings, receptions, and that sort of thing?
I suppose so. That's what they do now.
But does your organization plan on utilizing it for some sort of a purpose as well then, or...?
Well, we find that the Starett Center is underutilized right now, so we wanted to help the Parks Department to bring in more programming to that facility. But that is really not part of this grant. This grant is really about a capital improvement project.
And you said too, in the first presentation about the water tower, is that something that's been dropped?
Unfortunately, that was Phase Seven or Six, and the Lilly Endowment only funded up to Phase Five. The mayor and myself and a couple of our planning committee will be meeting with the Lilly Endowment later this month, and they will talk to us about the phases that were funded. I don't have any more information than that.
Okay, and one other thing, this, part of this, you're actually going to build a building of sorts in this parking lot. That be correct statement?
We're building in addition to the theater, and then we are moving a historic building over to that plot of land, yes.
And currently, right now, you're paying the city rent on this theater, $2,400 and some dollars? Isn't that a month? Is that what that is?
No, we are not. We're partnering with the city. We're bringing programming.
And so, you've never paid rent in the past, or...?
We have paid rent in the past.
But you are no longer doing that?
We have a lease with the city that is $1 a year.
So, once all this is done, and this $5 million is utilized, then what? I mean, there's going to have to be utilities, there's going to have to be, I mean, right now, if the city's getting a dollar, you know, there's gotta be a lot of overhead that's going to be asked along to the city, would it not?
No more than there is right now. What we see in the future is improvements worth of almost $6 million to a location that's already programmed for citizens, and we see it being bigger and brighter and more beautiful and more vibrant as a tool for economic development. And so, we see Arts for Lawrence's budget getting bigger every year. We see the Parks Department's budget getting bigger every year. We see more restaurants coming in. We see more businesses coming in. We see our constituents, the people that work here, staying here in the evening and spending their discretionary dollars here. That's what we're trying to do for the city.
But is Arts for Lawrence, does it have, will it have a staff, or does it have...?
We have staff, yes.
You do have staff? Does Arts for Lawrence pay for that staff, or...?
Yes.
Okay, so, that isn't something that's on the shoulder of the taxpayers, is the staffing of...
We're a nonprofit. We have our own budget. We pay our staff their salaries out of our budget, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? We're partnering with the city. We're bringing programming.
And so, you've never paid rent in the past, or...?
We have paid rent in the past.
But you are no longer doing that?
We have a lease with the city that is $1 a year.
So, once all this is done, and this $5 million is utilized, then what? I mean, there's going to have to be utilities, or going to have to be... I mean, right now, if the city's getting a dollar, you know, there's got to be a lot of overhead that's going to be asked along to the city, would it not?
No more than there is right now. What we see in the future is improvements worth of almost $6 million to a location that's already programmed for citizens. And we see it being bigger and brighter and more beautiful and more vibrant as a tool for economic development. And so, we see Arts for Lawrence's budget getting bigger every year. We see the Parks Department's budget getting bigger every year. We see more restaurants coming in. We see more businesses coming in. We see our constituents, the people that work here, staying here in the evening and spending their discretionary dollars here. That's what we're trying to do for the city.
But is Arts for Lawrence... Does it have... Will it have a staff? Or does it have...
We have staff.
You do have staff? Does Arts for Lawrence pay for that staff, or...?
Yes.
Okay, so, that isn't something that's on the shoulder of the taxpayers, is the staffing of...
We're a nonprofit. We have our own budget. We pay our staff their salaries out of our budget, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Madam President, I got a couple. I know on the original name, it was called Partnership for Lawrence, so that's been changed, Arts for Lawrence?
Our legal name is Partnerships for Lawrence. We rebranded about three years ago to tell people what we do rather than how we do it. We do all of our programming through partnerships, thus the name. But we felt it was easier for the community to understand what we do if we rebranded.
Okay, and I take it there's a mission statement we can share?
Arts for Lawrence connects community to the arts, to inspire everyone every day.
Okay. And I know in the original one, I think we were... Was it 13 million or something like that when we originally, you were asking?
8.8 million.
8.8 million. When you gave that number originally, you said then you had funding put back for five years of funding that. On this and here, I look at the five phases, it comes to $5,515,341, which leaves basically $336,000 left. What do you plan on doing with the remaining balance of that?
I'm not exactly sure where you got those numbers.
I added up the five phases.
There's a planning phase that you may not have added in, yeah.
So, what then...
So, the way the proposal was written, it was written, phases one through seven, but there was an initial phase in the beginning called the planning phase, and the Lilly Endowment also funded that phase.
So, that's the difference of the $336,000?
I assume it is, yeah.
And so, for clarification, the Lilly Endowment Fund will make sure that you spend every dollar of this in the way in which it was intended to be spent.
Absolutely. There is... With our contract, the city has the contract with the Lilly Endowment. Arts for Lawrence will be managing the grant, and there are reports due to the Lilly Endowment on a regular basis.
Any other questions from councilors?
Okay, thank you so much, Judy, for the update. We're excited, and we can't wait to start on Phase One. Next on the agenda, we have comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions.
Madam President, I would like to say a couple of words. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues up here for the flowers, daisies that were sent to my house. I really appreciate your texts and cards and everything. And from the administration and the police department, I appreciate that. And on another note, I was on, looking through Facebook and watching the TV as I was at home from surgery, and it looks like this lady in Old Lawrence, and by, I believe it's behind the Old Marsh, she was complaining about the stormwater drains needed. And she said a lot of flooding was going on there. And we went back and forth, and she really didn't know who... She said she contacted the mayor's office, and then I found out where exactly what location that she was in. And she is in District Two, which probably be your district. Okay. And she was wondering if they were going to do any infrastructure down in her area.
Where exactly is she located?
It is down behind the... Behind Marsh, I believe that is...
Okay, okay.
Mitchener, 49th and Mitchener, possibly?
Yeah.
I know exactly who you're talking about. You know that one. Oh, yeah. I know that one very well.
I think we'd be looking for an update from someone in the administration on, you know, where we stand with that. I know there's an effort going on with the city of Indianapolis, and, you know, we need to get some kind of update. I think we've had one for quite a while.
Okay.
So, I'd appreciate that.
And I also want to thank the Department of Public Works for the snow removal. They did a tremendous job out in Lawrence. I appreciate that.
Great. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
That's Councilor Jones.
Myself and Councilor Wells had the opportunity to go to a crime watch at Canterbury Apartments, and I was very impressed with the way the police chief handled that. And we had, I believe, seven police officers, prosecutor, chaplain, crime watch lady. And the interesting part was, is that no one showed up after 20 minutes of being there. And we were later told that the reason they didn't show up is they didn't want to show up because the police were there. And as a police officer, retired police officer, I mean, this has got to be a huge concern for the city. I mean, when you drive into that place, it's like a gauntlet, and it's not a very good place when the police go in or our first responders. And I'm wondering what the administration's planning on doing. An hour after we left, there were shots fired called in there just a few days ago. There was someone that was shot in the leg. So, I think that's something that we really need to address. It's becoming a very serious problem. And then, also, the last couple of months, I think this is the third month now, I've asked for an update for barricades on Franklin Road. Is there an update with that? Then also, piggybacking Counselor Freeman, interlocal agreement with the water company at 50th and Mitchener. I had... The guy keeps calling me on an update on this, and it's been months, and I've not heard anything.
Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Yes.
On 20 December, I'm not sure if everybody knows, but I have a five-month-old son who went to the Geist Community Center, or the Geist Community, and was later admitted to IU North. Engine 36 and ambulance 37 were called to the community facility, and I just wanted to thank Chief Vatalis that there was no higher professionalism than I have ever seen amongst the fire and the EMS that was shown that day to my family. So, personally, I wanted to thank those officers that were there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. Any other councilors? Yes, Counselor Shavlat.
Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the annual Lawrence Police Department awards ceremony. It was pretty spectacular. Chief Hoffman did an incredible job, and I wanted to recognize Adam Hazelwood, who was awarded Officer of the Year. And in addition to that, he's also one of our K-9 police officers, and through a contest of sort, was... His picture and his profile was voted on, and as a result, he has an all-expense-paid trip to the K-9 conference that's going to be in Las Vegas. I think it's in March or April.
Go to Vegas.
Yeah. But nevertheless, I wanted to recognize Adam. I've done a couple of ride-alongs with him, and I was not surprised that he was awarded Officer of the Year, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilor Wells.
I'd like to follow up what Counselor Freeman had mentioned earlier about this flooding. And she had also mentioned, you know, about the, you know, the Arts for Lawrence. A lot of people don't understand that... Because I've gotten quite a few calls about it myself, that this is a grant that just doesn't really cost the taxpayers, you know, to my understanding, anything. One of the things that I have heard again and again, and it was even on the city's Facebook page, I read some of that, comments that were made, is this is happening in my district because these apartments are in there and all these shootings. You know, people are saying, you know, we're spending $8 million for a renovation on Arts Place, we're spending $13 million for a new police building, we're, you know, we're doing this and this and this, but yet, we can't stand out on our front porch without fear of being shot. And, you know, maybe that's... Well, I'm not even sure that is an exaggeration. I think there may be some fact to that. And, you know, it's a frightening thing when it's just so a regular occurrence. And I know there are certain things that can't be done, but there... Maybe there are things that can be. And I also would like to see some, you know, like this flooding. I'd like to see some answers from the administration. What exactly the things that we were told that were going to happen, such as the flooding on Mitchener, such as the flooding that's, let's see, west of Richhart. All that, in the very first year, we all took public office. This was all supposed to be a priority, and we were going to get right on that. We were going to the stormwater, Marion County Stormwater, to get this, you know, make a bid for them to get to work on fixing this. I was told by the previous street department individual that, yeah, the plans are on the table. I've never seen them, and I would love to see them. I would love to see what exactly is planned, when exactly we intend to do it. Is it going to happen this year, or is it not? Counselor Jones mentioned this 46 and Franklin Road. That is a debacle. You know, if anybody that would drive down 46th Street at 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock and see the line of cars that are backed up because that intersection has now been blocked off, and it was blocked off in our very first year and has been completely forgotten about. And it looks... One, it looks horrible. And two, you know, it's creating a traffic nightmare for the people that are trying to commute in that area. But, you know, I think the administration should step up here and let us know these things that we've been promised and the things that we were told. Is any of this going to happen? You know, we were told in the very first, before we even took office, that this city was going to have an animal shelter. Well, that got completely thrown to the wind. And so, you know, there's going to be... We've got one year, some of us have, one year left in public office, maybe, you know, who knows? But I would like to see some of the things that we've told these people, I'd like to see some of it come to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wells. Counselor Giles?
I'll keep my remarks brief, but I do want to speak about the interlocal agreement in stormwater. That is a significant issue in my district as well as Counsel Wells's district in District Two. But we must know, and I want the constituent to know, we have city government in this here, we have county government, we have state government. We had a decision to make to enter into that interlocal agreement or not. We had the opportunity back out of it. And being in the interlocal agreement basically puts us into that stormwater county plan. And so, there are plans and projects that have been submitted from the city of Lawrence to be done by the county. But of course, as you drive across Indianapolis, we have stormwater problems throughout the entire county. So, unfortunately, I'm not trying to say that we're... You know, I personally voted against us being in the interlocal agreement, but I also, as I dug deeper, understood that that would have put a lot of responsibility on us to try to accomplish something as well as got us out of the interworking of county government here. So, I just will say that we can submit projects, we can recommend projects, but when we stayed in that interlocal agreement, it took away the ability here to do things. Now, things that have worked is that we paved a lot of streets, and I can honestly say, David Street in my community would flood with ducks and stuff like that would rain. Since David Street has been paved, it's not perfect, but we're a far cry. Also, if you go into Brookhaven, Karen and Catherine does not flood in the way that it did prior to the paving. And I drive down it, when it rains, I take pictures. I got pictures of three years ago, I got pictures of today, because my basement floods. I fight water in my own property consistently. So, I'm saying that to only say, Madam Chair, that some responsibilities that we share are county responsibilities, just facts.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Wells.
Very quickly, in response to what Counselor Giles just said, I'm very happy for him that he has had success with getting problems fixed in his district. And I too have, as I mentioned, I too have concerns, and we have problems in my district as well. And they have been totally forgotten about. They have been... They have... The people have been told in the very beginning that these things were going to be fixed, and we have been told all along that they were going to be fixed. So, I understand about the interagreement, but, you know, don't tell somebody that you're going to take care of a problem and then not do it. And that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you. So, clearly, we need an update from the administration regarding the sewage and drainage issue in the areas that were communicated earlier. So, if we can get that for the first of the March meeting, I would appreciate it, as well as the concerns that Counselor Jones mentioned at 46 and Franklin with the barricade. If we could get those updates, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of regular meetings of January 7th and January 16th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Counselor Shavlat.
Second.
Second, Counselor Jones. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands to approve the minutes? Unanimous?
Or no?
All in favor by a show of hands to approve the minutes? Okay. Opposed?
Stay.
One abstention. Thank you. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Counselor Shavlat.
A second.
Second, Counselor Freeman. Any discussion?
Counselor.
Okay, all in favor by a show of hands to approve the payments? Reports of committee? There are none. Unfinished business? There is none. New business? Consideration of council appointment to the Fire Merit Commission? I'm going to open it up for nominations.
Madam President, can I ask the clerk to read whose term is expiring?
Sure.
Damon Burns, his term expires, excuse me, February 28th of this year.
David Burns?
Damon Burns.
Oh, Damon, I'm sorry.
Okay, nominations are open. I would like to recommend that we keep Damon Burns as our appointment on the Fire Merit Commission. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, nominations are closed. You could please cast your vote via ballot.
Thank you.
Seven. Rick, you didn't want to vote?
I'm sorry?
You didn't want to vote?
I thought I did. Well, I didn't put it in there, I'm sorry.
Seven votes were cast for Damon Burns, he is our appointed to the Fire Merit.
Thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Burns. Next, we have consideration of council appointment to the Police Merit Commission.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Jones.
I'd like to recommend Mr. Charles Wheeler. I know him, and he has served on this merit board previously, and has done a really good job, and he's also a retired IPD officer. So, I'd ask that we reelect him to that board.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Tara Milton.
Any other nominations?
T-A-R-A.
Could we read the names again, please? The two nominations?
Charles Wheeler.
Wheeler, okay.
And Tara Milton.
Tara?
Tara.
Tara.
Madam Clerk, can you confirm that Charles Wheeler is the person whose term is expiring?
Yes. His term expires March 31st, 2019.
Okay.
Five votes were cast for Charles Wheeler and two for Tara Milton. Charles Wheeler is the council's appointment to the Police Merit Commission. Charles Wheeler is the council's appointment to the Police Merit Commission.
Congratulations, Mr. Wheeler. Next on the agenda, we have proposal number one, 2019.
Proposal number one, 2019, introduced by Councilor Chavis, a proposal for an ordinance adopting and enacting a 12th supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lawrence, Indiana.
I'll second.
We need it first.
You didn't ask.
You're going to make the motion?
I'm ready to go home.
You're making the motion?
Wait, are you going to make a motion to suspend the rules, or?
Hey, Councilor Giles, you're getting ahead of yourself. So we will need a motion to suspend the rules, and that will require a unanimous vote. Okay? So is there a motion on the floor to suspend the rules?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, please.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion, Councilor Giles, second, Councilor Shavitt. All in favor by a show of hands to suspend the rules? Okay, it's unanimous. Now, is there a motion to approve proposal number one, 2019?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number one, 2019.
Motion, Councilor Giles? Is there a second? I'll second it. Second, Councilor Chavis? All in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous. Proposal number two, 2019.
Proposal number two, 2019, introduced by Councilor Shavitt, a proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence municipal code concerning fees and charges related to the removal, storage, and related services pertaining to vehicles.
Is there a motion?
You're going to put this in committee?
Oh, you know what? We're getting ahead of, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm just wanting to approve everything tonight. So I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to assign this one to code.
Code, who's the chair of our code this year?
Council Williams.
Yep. Council Williams is the chair, and...
Okay, that's, I just needed to know.
Bobby was the vice.
I know you said, I just need to work with him, because there's, might be some amendments. Yeah. But I'll work with him as it goes into committee.
Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to go ahead and assign that to code. Okay, comments of the administration? No comments. Citizens' comments? Looks like we have Linda Moore first on the list. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Linda Moore, 4909 Leon Drive. Want to thank the city for their good snow plowing and street cleaning, because that really helped. And recently, we had a suspicious car in the neighborhood, and the police did get it checked out in a fairly quick time. It was at one of our empty houses, so it was questionable why that car was over there. I'm not quite sure of the result. As we talk about flooding, Leon and the surrounding streets still do flood badly. Maybe your street does not, but Leon is like an ocean at times and a river. It will be high. Really want to know what we are looking at to help the older areas of the city. We've got a lot of people, at least in my neighborhood, I've been told of people moving out because of the situations over there. And these are long-term residents that have just had enough over the last, you know, 10 years. There have been some that have told me about house damage to roofs because of, after the fireworks and the gunfire on New Year's Eve, and then we had all the snow and everything, that they were noting leaks in the roofs. And of course, they're probably small enough that the insurance isn't going to be something to cover that. Trash still remains an issue. We had a couch that was frozen to the ground that was there after, it waited its 30 days from one trash pickup, big trash pickup, to the next trash pickup. And the guy was literally having to disassemble it to get it picked up. And that couch was called in, it was put out right after big trash day, the last time. So, and it was close enough on the street that it could have caused some problems with plowing the streets and things like that, because that guy's trash was drifting out into the street. You know, really want to know, again, what's happening with the animal shelter, because unfortunately, we do have animal issues. And that was on the agenda for quite some time ago, and it seems to be left off. You know, most of what I see is that we really need to be looking at what is the good for the city, and that, you know, that's the big parts of the city, the nice parts, but also, we need to look over on the west side, and we need to look to the south, where the areas are struggling. They don't need a whole lot to get them back up to par, but there needs to be some intervention there. And, you know, because most of us don't want to move out, and many of us don't have the means to move out. The older folks own their houses, there are not places for them to go at the amount of money that they have invested. But the people over in my area feel that they are very much neglected. And they do get concerned when we're building the stuff over in the fort. Yeah, we want to come over and enjoy what's in the fort, but we also want to be able to enjoy our neighborhood, and to be able to go out and sit in front of our houses and not worry about getting shot. So that's basically where I stand tonight, and hopefully, we can start looking at some things towards the spring to help these areas out. I don't have solutions. I'd like to see a list of solutions kind of put out there, what we can work towards, because if we've got a list, then we can organize the neighbors to help that out with the city. But we've got to have a cohesive effort here to make it work. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Next, we have Carlton Curry. If you could please come forward, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Carlton Curry, 11230 Whitingwood Court. I'm a little late this year, so Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
With respect to comment on the stormwater efforts, I really didn't come prepared to speak tonight, but since it was brought up, it's my understanding that about two years ago, the surveys were completed for the major project that was contemplated for 47th and 48th Street, extending from roughly Richhart West to be moving that stormwater out. I believe those surveys were complete. I also know that the city-county council, when they established a stormwater agency for the year, that the excluded communities, such as Lawrence, were guaranteed, guaranteed that the taxes collected for stormwater would be spent in those communities. There were representations by the city made shortly after the new administration came on board that indicated that it would take a local, interlocal agreement to facilitate that, because the previous administration had failed to submit plans for the long-term funding plans. And consequently, they were not in the programs that were presented by the overall board, and therefore were put behind. It was my understanding that was to be corrected about a year and a half ago. I've heard nothing that says there has been a signature between the city of Lawrence and the city of Indianapolis that would identify specifically when those dollars are to be made available to us. I would hope that this would be brought forward in further investigation by the council. So with these remarks, I hope you will all take that into account, because I believe that we are in a much stronger position, stronger position, as an excluded community on a basis of that particular ordinance as passed by the city-county council, if we will just step up and do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We adjourn.